7:01 on Wednesday, March 15, 2023, and I'll call the zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order. I have with me tonight Jim Dietrich, Catherine Howe, James Mitchell, John Benares, Sean Zahn, and Brian Solis. We will be going through the applications based on the order they are in the agenda. The first application before us is the one for 37 Vine Street. I will open the public hearing for the application of Mike Kirk for a special permit under Sections 4.1.10F, 6.1.2, and 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw, and/or other relief as may be necessary to construct a 15-foot-by-35-foot granite swimming pool and 25-foot-by-10-foot paver patio at 37 Vine Street, Assessors' map 47, Lot #2 in the general district, filed with the town clerk on January 19, 2023. Mike, are you prepared to present your application?
Yes.
Yeah. There are microphones all around the room.
Do you want to use the podium so you can set your laptop down?
Whatever you want.
Just roll it over.
So I think we'll have the packets describing the property at 37 Vine, a fence lot, single-family home. It's primarily the area outside the house is lawn. I'll just say concurrently, we're working with the Conservation Commission because it is within the 200-foot buffer. It's outside of 100-foot, and so there's a request for determination going on in there. I'm not sure if that should have gone before this or after this, but I think it's later this month. So I guess we... I've never participated in one of these.
It's all right.
They're a lot of fun.
Move things along, or, you know, direction. I'm a willing learner. So I guess on page one...
We're not very good at that.
Okay, is a survey of the property. 37 Vine Street on the bottom, and apologize that the Google Maps, everything has flipped the other direction, so you've got to do that gymnastics in your mind. But superimposed on that, the existing property and patio is, that was not part of the official survey, the housing structure on the left, but the dimensions are, to my best ability, correct. So the pool's going to go on the right-hand side, 15 feet by 35. Again, this is outside the 100-foot buffer for solving. Page two just gives a poorly photoshopped rendering of what I think this would look like, maybe. But I think probably the details you guys are most interested in. On page three, again, now we've flipped the other direction, but you have a five-foot front setback, 10-foot on the side, and 10-foot rear. So the pool obviously is all within those, so we're eight feet from Vine Street, 15 feet from our neighbor to the west, and then the closest point to the neighbor to the west whose property extends on the southern side behind us is 11 feet, is the closest approach at that point. Any questions about that to begin with?
No, I think if you just explain the next one, where the four-foot fence is going.
Yeah, so, yeah, the entire property has an existing six-foot fence, but we want to put in a four-foot fence that kind of goes perpendicular to Vine Street, parallel to the house, and then, you know, kind of cuts over, and then to the southern point there. So that's about 15 feet along the side of the pool. That'd be a four-foot fence. If it, you know, if there's any recommendations or guidelines on that, we... The problem is, there is a door to the side of the house that opens to the yard, and we, you know, you may be able to get a door alarm or a water alarm, but I think a fence would be the safest thing for a small child, you know, gets out of the house, gets towards the pool. So we don't have small children, but we have, someday our...
Catherine has something she can send you.
Yeah, kids would love to play in your pool. So test your fence.
So the four-foot fence would need a locking gate.
Yes, locking gate, so she knows.
So if we had Catherine, the key to that, to that question.
Yes, yes, of course, the commission always gets it.
Or just Catherine. I think you can climb over the fence.
Yeah. So page five shows the distance to the neighbors. This is only newly planted trees on the property. So really, the neighbor to the left at 50 feet there has, from their second story, would be able to, you know, see the pool, talk to them. They're aware of this, and haven't raised any objections to me that they may have otherwise. But that's really the only neighbor that could really view in it, view that area, property directly across the street, pretty tight angle to have some sort of, I don't think annoying system.
Do you plan on having any lighting installed out there?
No, I think just pool lighting, we just have some solar kind of uplights and trees planted.
Let me discuss it, the elementary school.
Yeah, yeah, the elementary school is a nice... And then on page six, we just have a small patio on one end, most likely be some sort of permeable something. I'm not disrupting the drainage to the creek. That will all kind of be along the inside of the fence. Some questions on page seven, we could, you guys touched a lot on that. You know, in terms of the work being done, there is a fence along Vine Street. The plan is to remove three or four of those eight-foot panels and posts, and, you know, so there won't be, you know, I think the minimal, easy access to excavate in that area, and then servicing it, I think would also be pretty convenient, being that it's parallel to the street. You know, there is natural gas right actually on the corner of the house, between the house and where the proposed pool would go. It would be a little bit of minimal excavation to get to that. We plan on housing the pool equipment in the basement of the house, so hopefully that can happen. I guess there's a bit of going through the foundation, but it's beyond me.
Okay, just, any members of the board have any questions?
I have one question, and we kind of asked this when we were at the site on Saturday. Just curious that if you've done any exploration about the need for blasting. It didn't look like there was a small outcrop, I don't know if that's a boulder or something else.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know on that. We haven't, like, done any tests, you know, so the digs have kind of explored the boundary of that.
You'll find out pretty soon once the excavator shows up.
I think we'll find out very soon, yeah. And what's the recommendation? I mean, we, they say we have to blast or kind of hammer it out, is that...
Well, Sarah would be good about...
At least in both ways.
You have to notify the neighbors, the building department.
Yeah, I mean, ho ramming doesn't require a blasting permit, but blasting does.
Okay, all right. Okay. Blasting, we...
That's the fire department, isn't it?
What?
The fire department.
Fire, yeah. You're required to have a fire detail.
Oh, okay.
And I strongly, but I strongly recommend if you're doing ho ramming that you notify your neighbors, because that's worse than the blasting.
Either way. We've both had things built around us recently, so...
All right, let the neighbors know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
How deep were your pool?
It's six to eight. I think we're going to go just this, yes, no diving or anything like that.
The other question we had was regarding the low-level lighting, and did you, were you able to send us a, or have a cut sheet of what that fixture will look like?
There's no planned outdoor lighting other than the in-pool light.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah, yeah.
So like the lights on the side of the pool?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So there's nothing around the patio?
Nothing around the patio.
Okay.
That's planned, yeah.
And so the only, we're, you know, we already are in the setbacks, and just would still be, it looks like lot coverage...
Yeah, the pools are not in the setback.
No, they're not.
No. But, and then the lot coverage, permeable and impermeable surfaces, it looks like we're okay on those.
This is a area with 70% allowed.
Yeah, I noticed that.
The business area, right on the...
It's because Chapman's greenhouse used to be there, so it was general district.
I was like, wow.
Any other questions?
Any, and you said you haven't gotten any feedback from your neighbors, like nobody, you've shared it with them, but nobody's really said anything.
Yeah, yeah, the neighbors are aware. We were initially going to do a notice of intent after talking to Chris with the Conservation Commission, but then we changed it to a, they recommended we just do a request for determination, but I'd already sent out the notice of intent to everyone within 300 feet.
Oh, no.
Which was two hours in the, in the post office, this certified letter.
I know.
But, yeah, and, you know, the only person we heard from thought that it was in a different area, a different property.
Oh.
34 Vine Street.
Totally confused.
They were, yeah, they thought that it would hurt the trees that are bordering between.
Right, but they had the wrong location, so, got it.
Is this subject to CONCON approval?
Yes, he's, he's applied.
So our decision today will be based on satisfactory CONCON approval?
No, we can't condition...
We just make our own decision, and then they decide whether they want to approve it or not. They're independent. Does it, they obviously play into each other, because if CONCON denies it, they can't move forward with ours, but we can approve it, and then we can't condition it, though.
And they would, if CONCON moves it or changes it, then it comes back to us?
Comes back to us.
Before us for a modification.
Yeah.
If, if we decided to do a fiberglass pool instead of granite, would that have any impact on...
For us, no. If you move it...
Yes, yeah.
Or change it, then yes, but if it's just the material...
We're primarily concerned about the location, the safety features, and the lighting.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah.
Those are our primary concerns, but the actual construction material is more building, a permit issue. Yep. Is there any member of the public who would like to be heard on this application? If so, would you please raise your hand in Zoom? Joan Endicott, please state your name and address. Whoops, you just muted yourself.
Undo it.
Okay, thanks. I'm Joan Endicott, I'm at 51A Norwood Avenue, and I'm approximately perpendicular to Mr. Kirk's property. I have some major concerns, while I certainly love swimming, and nothing personal, I'm very concerned about the location of the pool's impact on the water supply, the proximity to the brook, the challenge to the water table with any construction, the blasting as it would affect other homes, and the conservation potentially if there's wetlands back there, because I certainly know that there is a lot of wet land. I don't know plant-wise what's out there. But I believe that in terms of the water table and the past history of flooding on Vine and Norwood, I worry about the impact to the water table with any construction that would impact at least 12 houses in that neighborhood. And I haven't seen the plans in terms of how close it is in relation to the brook. And I know that there's been certainly concerns with my property adjacent to the brook with permeability, so I would hope that there would be some kind of impact studies done, both in terms of the water table, the brook, the water supply, and permeability.
Mr. Kirk?
Yeah, hi, Joan. Appreciate your concerns, and a bit of an education process as we've started this. Working with the Conservation Commission, we have discussed, yeah, the change in permeable versus impermeable surface areas. One of the greater parts that wasn't part of the special permit was to balance the decrease in permeability due to the construction of the pool with an increase in permeability in other areas of the property. Mainly, there's currently an asphalt driveway. The plan is to remove the asphalt and replace that with a permeable surface, probably gravel. And so we're currently working with the Conservation Commission to ensure that those ratios, and it's actually be almost a net zero change in permeability. Regarding the blasting, certainly, you know, as we, as we discussed, I would do the proper notifications and rely on the experts to that. Currently, that entire area is lawn in terms of other sort of native plantings or wetlands. It's currently just a lawn on the property.
Helen? I was just going to say, you can totally correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah. I appreciate a lot of Joan's concerns, but I think they're more within CONCON's purview than ours, so while they're definitely valid and legitimate, I think they may be things that will be more properly voiced and debated by CONCON than by us.
I agree.
Okay. Yes, Joan?
How would that process include people? I don't, I'm not aware of that process, and I haven't received any notices about the process.
When's, uh...
Hi, Joan, yeah, Mike, again. We mailed out a, what's called a notice of, a notice of intent to everybody within 300 feet. The Conservation Meeting, I'm not sure of the exact date, I think it's near the end of this month, but I will go back and ensure that something was mailed to you, and if not, I'm happy to have a set of plans for you if you'd like.
Yeah, that would be great, because the only notice I received was this one, which came, certified notice of public hearing.
Are you, what's your, your address again?
51A.
51A Norwood Avenue. So this is the first time I'm aware of your, your plans. And as I said, I'm very concerned about water table and the impact it has on property, and because all of those homes are, have their utilities impacted, and we've had a past history of significant flooding. Fortunately, we've had stability of the water table, probably largely due to drought, but I'm optimistic that what the town has done so far has been to try and correct it with piping, and, but it's still an area that is at risk for flooding, and blasting and putting something so close to the brook is a major, major, major concern for me.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for listening.
Hey, Joan, do you have something? No? Anything I have any further?
No, I think it's, her concerns with this, sort of...
Solution, okay, okay.
Was Endicott, was...
Joan Endicott. CO2.
Certified. She was included? Yeah.
But certified mail, I will just tell you, as an attorney, it does not always get where it's going, like, because if people don't answer, if they're not home, or like, whatever, it doesn't...
An in-person visit might be useful in this.
Might work.
Yeah, and a lot of us never take certified mail, nothing...
Right, if you want me to sign for it.
I don't think Ed McMahon ever delivered a check certified.
Nothing good comes certified.
Okay, you ready to have me make a motion?
Sure.
Okay. I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Mike Kirk for a special permit under Sections 4.1.10F, 6.1.2, and 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw, and/or other relief as may be necess... Oh, hold on just a minute. I have a hand raised. Beth Schwartz?
Ms. Schwartz?
Hi.
Yep, go ahead.
Good evening, this is Robert Livingston and Beth Schwartz at 32 Vine Street.
Okay.
And we have no objections to the permit by Michael Kirk. I'm sorry? We're neighbors, we live at 32 Vine, and we have no objections to the permit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your input.
You're welcome.
Anybody else wish to speak? No? Okay. Well, then I'll make a motion. Try again.
Part two.
I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Mike Kirk for a special permit under Sections 4.1.10F, 6.1.2, and 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw, and/or other relief as may be necessary to construct a 15-foot-by-35-foot granite swimming pool and permeable paver patio with an automatic cover and a four-foot-high fence with locking gates between the house and the pool, connecting with the existing six-foot fence surrounding the property, and low-voltage LED lights at 37 Vine Street, Assessors' map #47, Lot #2 in the general district, filed with the town clerk on January 19, 2023. Based on a finding that the proposed pool is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, the proposed pool will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located, and all requirements and conditions under Section 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met, based on the following conditions. The pool is located as depicted on the plan of land prepared by Stephen E. Stepaniski RLS dated 8/19/2022 and page three of the proposed pool submission package. The proposed four-foot fence between the house and the pool connecting to the existing six-foot fence surrounding the property is located as depicted on page four of the proposed pool submission package and is constructed in accordance with the specifications of the Manchester zoning bylaw and the Massachusetts Building Code. All lighting shall be low-voltage LED contained within the pool wall, and the permeable patio is located as depicted on page six of the submission package. Do I have a second?
Second.
Brian, seconds. Here's a roll call vote of the five full-time members. Catherine, approved. James?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Brian?
Approved.
And Sarah, approved. Who would like to write this?
I'll write it.
John, okay. Who would like to review it? I'll review it. Okay. Thank you. You're all set.
Appreciate it.
Generally, it's about up to 90 days before we write it. And then there'll be a...
We'll be done within a couple weeks.
20-day appeal period.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, my son, 90 days?
You mean, what, 90 days?
Unless there's a hockey game.
Oh, yeah. The next item on the agenda is 64 School Street. I will open the public hearing for the application of Benjamin Herter, DSK Architects and Planners on behalf of Pierce and Phoebe Coos, for a special permit under Sections 5.4, 6.1.2, and 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw, and/or other relief as may be necessary to construct a first-floor addition directly underneath an existing non-conforming second-floor bay on a non-conforming structure which approaches into the side setback. At 64 School Street, Assessors' map #42, Lot #11, and District B, filed with the town clerk on February 21, 2023. I'll open by saying that we've received letters of support from Tom Dodge, Alan Sue Sentner of 72 School Street, Brian and Beth Davis of 4 Sumac Lane, Cheryl and Michael Tedesco of 68 School Street. Somebody here who would like to present this application?
Sure. This is Ben Herter from DSK Architects and Planners. Thanks very much for your time this evening. And I see Phoebe Cows is on the line here as well, the owner of the property, so is there any questions directed? If there's any questions directed at the owner, we're both here to respond to those. So let me share my screen, and I'll, and I'll walk everyone through the project. I am unable to share my screen.
Right, what do you, what do you signed on, wait a minute? What do you signed on as?
It should come up as Ben Herter.
I know. Took me a minute. I was like, wait a minute. Oh, there it is, sorry.
And everything I'm about to share should be in your packets in front of you as well.
Okay, you should be able to show it now.
Okay. Okay, is everyone now seeing the GIS map?
Yes.
Hopefully, on your screen? Okay, wonderful. So just to orient everybody here, the property at 64 School Street is what's highlighted in yellow here. the property at 64 School Street is what's highlighted in yellow here. You can see that it is remote from School Street here, setback, and tucked into the backside of the Powerhouse Hill Reservation. The area of focus that we're looking at tonight is in this general vicinity here between the main house structure and the side yard setback line, which is under this highlighted orange line. And I'll open the site plan now, which was created by County Land Surveys. So zooming in on that structure, you can see the proposed area of construction highlighted in this crosshatch over here. And I'll back up for a second. The reason, which may have been communicated during the site visit this weekend, the reason for this addition is primarily to correct a structural issue that is ongoing with the second-floor bay above this particular area on the house. I can point to it in the elevations when we get there. But the second-floor bay is being supported by some lolly columns that are slipping off of the precast block footings underneath them. And there is corrosion ongoing at the base of these lolly columns as well. So there is a need to act on fixing this problem. What the cows would like to do is to put a more permanent solution in for supporting the second-floor bay, which, as you can see, is extending one foot to the side yard setback. This was constructed prior to zoning. What we're intending to do is put this first-floor addition directly underneath the second-floor bay, as mentioned earlier, and not to exceed the extents of that second-floor bay. So it would be completely encapsulated within that footprint. So here's the elevation of that north side facing what is 70 School Street. And you can see in this drawing here, the second-floor bay. And these supports here are the lolly columns in question that are failing at the base. And a side view of that as well. There are some architectural brackets that would be removed in this process as well. They are also failing. Next screen. Okay. So this is the proposed addition. This garden conservatory-style addition underneath this bay would be there primarily, again, to support that second-floor bay. But it would also be integrated into the floor space of the living room, which is the space beyond this exterior wall here. And you can see that again from the north as well as the east. And what we tried to represent here also is, you know, the line of the existing bay to show that we're respecting that footprint and staying within that. And just to give you a full picture of that in floor plan as well, this is the first-floor plan of that living room space. The area in question is here. These dashed lines are the box bay above at the second-floor level. Here's the property line. And with the addition, we are staying within both the property line as well as the second-floor box bay above, but providing some more daylighting into the living room space. I know, not your purview, but that's the intent of the project.
Thank you.
So I guess I'd like to open it up to questions.
Any member of the board have a question? I don't have a question at this time.
I have a question.
Sure.
The, I can't tell from the GIS. I think this is probably not an issue. But when you go to excavate for the proposed foundation, it appears to me that you're going to go over the property line and into the adjoining neighbor's property. Will there be any disruption to structures or landscaping or any other concerns by the necessity in doing that?
No, not intended. And based on, let's open the, maybe the site plan here. So there's a retaining wall here. And you can see that the, there's a convergence of the retaining wall and the exterior wall here. So it's a pretty tight site. And so the conversations that we've had with builders, they've suggested that likely the excavation would be happening by hand. This would be a hand-dug foundation. So we wouldn't be bringing in a large excavator to do the digging.
That makes sense. And so the neighbors are aware of what you're proposing?
Correct. The neighbors at 70 School Street were one of the people who have submitted letters of support for this project.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah.
And who were the neighbors at 70 School? Is that Tom Dodge?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I didn't have to be addressed.
His address wasn't on the letter.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I'm okay with it's not expanding on the non-conforming nature.
It's a 42-square-foot addition.
Yeah. It seems to be needed for structural reasons, so.
If you could lower your screen, that would enable me to see the people.
Oh, stop sharing? Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Is there any member of the public who wishes to be heard on this application? If so, please raise your hand in Zoom. Seeing none? Ready to make a motion to close the public hearing? Okay. I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Benjamin Herter, DSK Architects and Planners, on behalf of Pierce and Phoebe Coos, for a special permit under sections 5.4, 6.1.2, and 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw. Under other relief as may be necessary, to construct a first-floor addition directly underneath an existing non-conforming bay on a non-conforming structure which encroaches into the side setback at 64 School Street. Assessors map number 42, lot number 11, in District B, filed with the town clerk on February 21, 2023. Based on a finding that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw and the proposed 42-square-foot addition will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located than the existing non-conforming structure and the requirements and conditions under section 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met based on the condition that the addition is constructed in accordance with the following plans. Site plan record of boundary replacement prepared by County Land Surveyors, Inc., dated February 14, 2023, and update of plan dated January 16, 1997. Coos Residence Living Room Addition Plans prepared by DSK Architects and Planners dated February 21, 2023. First-floor plan existing, first-floor plan, north and east elevations existing, and north and east elevations proposed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Catherine seconds. Any discussion?
Move to vote.
Catherine, approved. James?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Brian?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. I can write this one. Who would like to review it?
I'll read it, Sarah.
Jim will review it. Okay. Thank you. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you for what you do.
All set?
Thank you. It's going to be an expensive closet.
I bet so. I bet so.
Maybe the highest cost per square foot.
Yeah.
Undertaking.
But that's okay.
You'll notice you said that once.
It'll be lovely.
You don't have any choice in the matter, do you?
Not really.
Well. There's a hardship going on.
Put more lolly columns in, I suppose.
It would look awful.
Yeah, they would. I agree.
It would look terrible.
It would look nice.
We've lived there for five years, so hopefully I can advertise it over 20.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
The next project on the agenda is Three Kings Way. I will open the public hearing for the application of Peter Canestracy for a special permit under sections 4.1.10F, 6.1.2, and 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw. Under other relief as may be necessary, to construct a 24-foot-by-47-foot gonite swimming pool and 25-foot-by-10-foot paver patio at Three Kings Way, assessors map number seven, lot number 31, and District C, filed with the town clerk on February 24th, 21st, 2023. Yes? Would you please go on mute?
They don't realize. They just walked away from their computer. It's the people whose last application was on.
Okay. Is there somebody who would like to present this application?
Sarah, my name's Mark O'Hern with Pools by Andrews. I don't know if Peter and Melissa is on. The owners are here.
Yeah, Melissa's on.
Hi, I'm Melissa Canestracy. I'm the owner.
It's Melissa.
So I need somebody to just walk us through.
Yeah, basically, Canestracy is a building at 24 by 47 gonite in-ground swimming pool with an attached spa for the set of plans we attached. Couple things that we're doing. We have two lights in the pool that both low-voltage LED, one light in the spa, which is the same. There's also what they call a cartridge shelter, so there's no backwash, which would affect the neighbor when needed. And we're also putting an ulterior sanitation system in the pool that reduces the chlorine by about 70%. The Canestracy are also going to be putting a five-foot fence all the way around the property for the set of plans. The blasting has already been done, I would say about a month and a half ago. So there'll be no blasting for the swimming pool since it's been preblasted. So having said that, I can take any questions from any of the board members.
I think that I have one question. When I look at the fence surrounding the property, it looks like there will be access directly from the house to the pool. And my question is, will all those exterior doors of the residence, which are within the confines of the fenced area, be properly alarmed?
Yes, they will.
Okay. Now, you also provided us with a preliminary landscaping and lighting plan. And it showed path step and wall lights. Will those all be low-voltage LED lights?
Yes, they'll all be low voltage.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I think we're covered.
Okay. Does the alarm on the doors cover the state code requirements? If it's not a fenced barrier, the alarm on the doors is sufficient under the state code? I don't know.
That's my understanding. Are you going to have an automatic cover also?
There's no automatic cover, but to your point that every egress door that walks out to the pool, it does have to be alarmed.
Okay.
And I'm assuming, Melissa, that there's a brand-new house under construction security system, I'm sure, will be set for every egress door that walks out to the pool area by code.
Yeah, I mean, we have younger children, so because of that and, you know, them having friends over and whatnot, it will, all those doors will be alarmed that have access to the backyard.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Nope.
Um, I'll make a motion. I move to close the public hearing. Whoops, wait a minute.
Do you want to ask for public comment?
Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome. Is there any member of the public who would like to make a comment on this application? Needing some help from my friends tonight.
We all need it sometimes.
Please raise your hand in Zoom if you wish to speak. Okay, seeing none, now I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Great.
I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Peter Canestracy for a special permit under sections 4.1.10F, 6.1.2, and 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw. Under other relief as may be necessary, to construct a 24-foot-by-47-foot gonite swimming pool and attached 44-square-foot round spa with a four-foot-high fence with locking gates surrounding the rear of the property between the house surrounding the property behind the house. At Three Kings Way, assessors map number seven, lot number 31, in District C, filed with the town clerk on February 21, 2023. Based on a finding the proposed pool is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, the proposed pool will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located and all requirements and conditions under section 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met based on the following conditions. The pool spa and four-foot-high fence with locking gates are constructed as depicted on the Pools by Andrews plan attached to this decision. And the fence is constructed in accordance with the specifications of the Manchester zoning bylaw and the Massachusetts Building Code. The proposed four-foot fence between the house and the, around the house and pool is located as depicted on the Pools by Andrews plan. All lighting shall be low-voltage LED contained within the pool and spa walls and low-voltage LED path step and wall lights. All exterior doors of the residence, which are within the confines of the fenced area, shall be properly alarmed. Do I have a second?
Second.
James seconds. Any discussion? Take a vote. Catherine?
Approved.
James?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Brian?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. Who would like to write this?
I'll write it.
James will write it?
I'll review.
Brian will review it. Okay, thank you. We now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is an appeal of an administrative decision. I will open the public hearing for the application of Benjamin B. Timon, attorney, on behalf of Samuel and Tracy Byrne of 1-3 Blossom Lane, for the appeal of an administrative decision under section 7.4.5 of the zoning bylaw regarding building inspector Paul Orlando's non-response and constructive [inaudible]. and constructive denial of a request for zoning enforcement sent to the building inspector on December 22nd, 2022, pertaining to Two Blossom Lane, assessors map number 17, lot number 12, and District E, filed with the town clerk on February 2nd, 2023. Is there anybody on the board who wishes to recuse themselves from this decision?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
In my role as a selectman member, I've had conversations with the contractor, both written and in face, and one of the neighbors. Although it revolves around parking and nothing that's being discussed here, I think in the interest of transparency that I should recuse myself.
Okay.
You're up.
So that means Sean's on as the first alternate will be participating. Rashad?
Would you like to chair back?
A little late for that, pal.
Mr. Timman, would you like to explain why you believe this is a valid appeal and how it meets the 30-day timeframe available for appeals?
Sure, Madam Chair. Benjamin Timman, counsel for Samuel and Tracy Byrne. The petition is misaction. So this particular appeal is based on a request for zoning enforcement that I made on behalf of the Burns to Inspector Orlando on December 22nd, 2022, addressing seven particular issues that were within the scope of the overall case that the board knows very well, you know, had been actively occurring during that period of time. Under sections 7, 8, and 15 of chapter 40A, there is a 14-day period for the building inspector to issue a response to a request for zoning enforcement. Now, there is case law in Massachusetts that makes that 14-day period not mandatory, but what the case law describes is directory, which essentially is more in the nature of a suggestion. But that same line of case law says that once the person who submits an RZE is put on notice that the building inspector is not going to act on, either not gonna act at all or not gonna act in the way that the requestor asked, once that moment happens, a 30-day period begins, under which the requestor would need to appeal that to the ZBA. In this particular circumstance, as I said, the request was made on December 22nd, 2022. No response was received within the 14 days. On January 23rd, I sent a follow-up email to Inspector Orlando on a couple of issues, but one of them was asking him whether he would have a response to the RZE of December 22nd. On January 25th, there was a public hearing, the final public hearing session, on the main appeal in this case here in this room. And Inspector Orlando was present over Zoom on that particular hearing and made clear at that meeting that he was, for example, allowing the Carpenter, McNeely, and Smith interpretation of the topographical change of compliance plan, so-called, to move forward, which was putting me on notice that the parts of the RZE that I had made asking that that not occur was going to occur. So that was basically when the 30-day clock, if you were to put a case law analysis on it, began to run. And of course, I filed the appeal February 2nd, so it was well within the 30 days. An additional document that came to my attention before that February 2nd filing was an email that Inspector Orlando sent on or about January 26th. I have it here, but it was forwarded to me on February 1st in which he indicated that he was going to remind the contractor of some of the construction management provisions of the original 2019 special permit, not to get overly complicated here with the details. But that was a further communication in writing this time from Inspector Orlando that put me on notice that he was not going to accede to my request of December 22nd, which included that the entire project be ceased until certain non-compliances that we've put forward could be corrected. So for those reasons, Madam Chair, the appeal is both ripe and timely under the time standards. As I mentioned in my letter to the board when I submitted this second appeal on February 2nd, recognizing that, you know, boards are busy and you just completed a lengthy hearing on this and might wonder what's going on with this follow-on appeal. Is it some kind of request for a do-over or something like that? Which isn't the case. But as I explained in that letter, even though our initial process here in front of the board, which was based on a June 2022 RZE, even though that RZE had requested specifically that this project be brought into compliance with any violation that was occurring then or in the future of the special permit or of the bylaws, that those non-compliances be corrected, even though there was that sort of catch-all for things that might happen in the future. I still thought it was appropriate, given that my request on December 22nd to Paul Orlando specified seven different things that were sort of ongoing or new things that had occurred, that it was appropriate that I also follow the exhaustion of administrative remedies under Massachusetts law with respect to those particular things, even though they overlap to a large extent with the issues that came up during the first hearing.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
So I think I followed everything that you were saying in terms of the timeline, and I understand where you're coming from in terms of exhaustion of administrative remedies. But as I read your December 22nd letter, I don't read it or email as a new enforcement request. It seems to be just questions related to the ongoing enforcement action. So in my mind, you know, it seems to me that if you didn't like our decision, you should just appeal it, like, and not be back here before us. This is just me looking at it, but, you know, this doesn't say I'm asking you to open a new enforcement matter related to these seven items or anything like that. It's not starting a new, in my mind, as I read it, it's not starting a new clock or initiating a new enforcement matter. It just relates to what we were already doing. So that's, I guess, my initial thoughts on it.
May I respond to that?
Yes.
Thank you. I do say in the December 22nd email that I'd appreciate your Inspector Orlando's responses to the following questions and ongoing enforcement requests.
Yeah.
So I recognize that it says ongoing enforcement requests and that they are things that were already happening. But, you know, this is trying to be a careful lawyer, particularly where there's an excellent lawyer representing the Smiths who has raised issues of jurisdiction and what's in or outside of the scope. And I think, you know, because we had, and the chair recognized this at various points during the hearing, because the initial RZE had this catch-all type of request, you know, I'm not concerned about it, but I think that the careful approach here is the one that I've taken with respect to these specific issues, some of which were new at that time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I speak?
Yes. Ms. Barry.
Good evening, and thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the ZBA. I appreciate this opportunity. My name is Julie Barry, and I represent Rodney Smith, the owners of Two Blossom Lane. My comments tonight are directed to the issue concerning the jurisdiction of the board to hear this. I'm in agreement. I'm sorry I didn't know the name of the member who just spoke, but I am in wholehearted agreement with her view of the December 22nd letter as well as the January 23rd, or the December 22nd email, as well as the January 23rd email that was a follow-up to it. There wasn't a request for zoning enforcement either in the December 22nd email or the January email. It was a request for information. The emails are peppered with language concerning the pending appeals, the ongoing appeals, information related to these existing appeals. So, and I appreciate the compliments and thank you, Mr. Timman, and I think you're an excellent lawyer too, and I think you're papering the things the way you need to do it. However, in this case, general laws, chapter 40A, section 7, requires that a request for zoning enforcement be in writing and in sight to the specific provisions of the bylaw that are at issue. Here, the most that could be said for the July, or the December 22nd email, the seven issues that were related, that were set out separately, were related to the ongoing appeal before the board of the request for enforcement in June 2022, which was denied by the building inspector in his July, in his July letter. So we don't, so those specific provisions don't relate to this appeal. There is a broad request for the board or for the building inspector to issue a cease and desist order on any activities on the site going forward, which, of course, the building inspector didn't agree to. But nonetheless, that doesn't set forth the required elements under 40A, section 7, not case law, but the statute that requires these things be laid out with specificity so that the building inspector knows what it is that he's being asked to respond to or to issue as far as a request for zoning enforcement. We don't have any of that here. And indeed, in the January 2030 mail following it up, it says, "I've not received a response to any of my questions below. As they are relevant to the ZBA proceeding, I intend to raise them at the hearing session this Wednesday." So, and there is case law that supports this. So if there's, the Elio case and as well as the Vogts case, I believe, both say that if there's no request for zoning enforcement and appeal before, the board can't lie. And that's what we have here. There simply wasn't a request for zoning enforcement. The issues that are raised have been addressed both in numerous public hearings before this board as well as in numerous writings. Mr. Merrick has an ample opportunity to speak. Indeed, what was submitted to this court today, I mean, to this board today, was site plans and excerpts from things that had been discussed at the previous hearing. So our position is the board would be correct in denying or dismissing this appeal because there was no request for zoning enforcement. Whether or not the building inspector responded to the information request is irrelevant, but certainly the time for doing so is not relevant when there was an impending request before him that needed a response. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions on the board? So I think that there's two things we need to consider. One is whether this is a valid request before us. The second is, even if we decide it's not a valid request, not a valid appeal, then the question is, if in fact it were valid, would we still deny the appeal on the basis that we adjudicated the topography issue at our January 25th public hearing based on the fact that the building inspector had issued a subsequent order with respect to topography. The property owners came forward with a remediation plan, and the building inspector responded on December 21st that he accepted that remediation plan. It would bring them in compliance with section 6.16 of the zoning bylaw. And that's what we, and that wasn't appealed within the 30 days, and that's the decision we made on January 25th. Yes, Catherine?
I agree with you as to step one. I don't know if we need to go to step two, but if you think we do for completeness of the record, I'm happy to consider it. But, you know, I think that really the first step is the threshold question that we really need to answer. And if it's not properly before us, then I don't know that we need to consider anything else at this time. I don't want to overcomplicate it if we don't need to.
Yeah, when I talked to town council, they suggested that it might be appropriate to
Bring that in.
Complete the record.
Okay. And that sets the flag.
That's why I was coming up with that.
So I have a question. I wasn't at that January meeting. I was out of town. So, but, so I don't know how I, you know, would vote, or am I supposed to vote on this?
I don't think voting on.
If it came to a vote.
I mean, I think the fact of the matter was that we came to a decision with respect to topography. So we adjudicated it already.
Sure.
So it wouldn't be appropriate on this appeal to do it again. So we're not going to the merit behind the decision we made.
Yeah.
The fact that we made a decision on January 25th.
And we're not reconsidering.
Right.
That makes sense.
James?
I think that Attorney Barry and Attorney Howe have made a good case for taking no action on this. I don't think this is a, I think we should deny this request. I don't think, in the, the way the facts have been presented to me, it doesn't appear to be a valid request. These matters were already adjudicated, and I just don't think we need to go there again.
Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak with respect to the validity of this appeal? If so, please raise your hand in Zoom. Okay. Look at that. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. See if I need help on my meeting. I move to close the public hearing for the application of Benjamin B. Timman, attorney, on behalf of Samuel and Tracy Byrne of 1 through 3 Blossom Lane, and deny the appeal of an administrative decision under section 7.4.5 of the zoning bylaw regarding building inspector Paul Orlando's non-response and constructive denial for requests for zoning enforcement pertaining to Two Blossom Lane, assessors map number 17, lot number 12, and District E, filed with the town clerk on February 21st, 2023, for the following reasons. In accordance with the case Carolyn M. Vogts et al. versus Avery W. Lovell, Inc., the 14-day limitation, the statute requiring a building inspector to notify and writing a party requesting enforcement of a zoning bylaw, any action or refusal to act is directory and not mandatory. Therefore, there is no constructive denial which would set in place the timeline for an appeal. In addition, and there was no response required as it was not a request for enforcement. Second, the email dated February 22nd, 2022, from Mr. Timman to Mr. Orlando, asked a number of questions but did not request an enforcement order, and Mr. Orlando had issued his approval of topography remediation plan on December 21st, 2022, and that administrative decision was not appealed within the 30-day statutory period. For those two reasons, we do not feel that the appeal is properly before us. Is that okay? But if this appeal is properly before us, we deny the appeal of an administrative decision on the basis that we fully adjudicated the topography concerns in connection with the original appeal filed with the town clerk on August 8th, 2022, for which we closed the public hearing on January 25th, 2023. And the enforcement officer's administrative decision dated December 21st, 2022 was not appealed within the 30-day statutory period. Is that okay?
I think you're good, yeah. The main point was it not being.
Okay, yeah, you got it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Catherine, second. Any discussion? Take a vote. Catherine? Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Public comment?
No, I already asked for public comment. No word today.
You did.
Yeah.
What, repeat the beginning of your motion. Did you make a motion to do what?
To deny the appeal. Would you rather have it dismissed?
Probably.
Okay.
What do you think?
So I amend the motion to say, instead of denying the appeal, that we dismiss the appeal, the administrative decision. Because it's not properly before us.
And even if it were?
But if it were, we would deny the appeal on the grounds that we previously adjudicated.
That makes sense.
That makes sense, yeah. Okay. You?
Second.
You second that?
I second the amended motion.
Any discussion? Vote, Catherine?
Vote to dismiss. So do I, I approve, I approve your motion to deny and dismiss.
Dismiss and deny.
James?
Approve. Approve.
John? Sean? And Sarah? So we dismiss the motion, but if it wasn't properly dismissed, then we deny it.
Yep.
All right, this one, since I'm writing the other mess, could you review it since you're?
I'd be happy to review it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We don't have any, now we're onto administrative items. We don't have any minutes to approve. We have decisions from January 25th, which have not yet been written. Right?
It might be mine.
What is that?
Probably. Yeah, probably me.
It is, James.
God.
But we need to get him the minutes. I know that, James.
Okay.
I'm with you.
Reading my mind.
So these decisions are going to have to be written based on draft decisions. We can't wait until the next meeting.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as I have the minutes, I'm good.
Draft minutes, okay.
Yep.
Was there a third decision?
No, that was the only one.
Okay.
You address 107 somewhere?
Yeah.
Correct.
Was the garage?
I don't remember.
Yeah, it was the top of the long driveway, the garage.
Right, in the height of the garage.
Yeah, the new outbuilding on that beautiful.
Yeah.
Star, star, yeah.
Okay. Were you saying something, Gail?
No, I just said it was about a variance for the height of the garage.
Right.
Was the application.
Now, the other thing I want to make sure people are aware of is when you're writing your decision, the, make sure that you indicate their hybrid meetings, not the old verbiage of remote meetings. And also at the November town meeting, on amendment to the zoning bylaw, change the time period for a special permit from two years to three years. And that was approved by the Attorney General.
The time period for, until it lapses?
Yes.
Our variance is still one year?
Yes. They didn't change. And that's because the state allows three years for special permits, but still has the one year for variances.
Okay.
Okay. Site visits. It's now light at night. Do we want to go back to?
Was it Mondays?
An evening. We used to do Mondays, yeah, at 5:30. I think Brian has an issue with that.
I have many issues. Every
He just has issues.
Well, depends on, let's see, so this is
It would be the third Monday.
So that would be a, I have an issue with that.
It doesn't have to be Monday.
Tuesdays? Can we do Tuesdays?
Tuesdays, we could do Tuesdays.
Tuesday, it might be a week-long Tuesday.
Yeah, I would say Tuesdays work better for me rather than Saturdays or Mondays.
Okay.
Sounds like Tuesdays.
So, at 5:00 or 5:30, what works?
5:30 or 6?
Yeah, pick one and then we could always switch if we need to.
5:30, 5:30 is better.
Okay, we'll schedule it for 5:30, but if somebody, if we're coming up before
And someone has a request to move it a little bit, anyway, we can try and do that.
Gail and I know, okay.
5:30 Tuesdays. Third Tuesday, right?
Yeah, third Tuesday.
I have it.
Okay, third Tuesday of the month. We have two, two applications for next month.
Two applications, oh, I thought you meant two people wanted to join the zoning board. I was so excited.
I have one application for zoning board, and I have to talk to the person to make sure that their business would not overlap with the zoning board business.
So that, so that'll be April 17th, the next one?
And that avoids
I'm sorry, 18th?
Monday holidays too, so April, Tuesday.
Right.
I'm going to be out of the country that week, so
April 18th is school vacation week, so, but I think I'm here anyway.
Our ZBA meeting is scheduled for April 19th. Is that a problem?
I'll be out of the country, but
We have an issue with public hearing notice, so we could theoretically change it to April 26th.
That might be prudent.
Yeah.
Will you be back, Charlie?
Yes.
And it's not a conflict with school vacation week.
I mean, don't change it for me, though, I mean, if
I mean, I should be here. I don't know, I don't think we're going anywhere. But, and we have two alternates, so if John's the only one out of town, then if for some reason
Keep it then.
Okay.
If, is there anyone else going out of town that week?
I'm going out with the, the 20th, the day after.
Me too. So let's keep it on the 19th then, because if for some reason I can't be there, our trusty alternates can, it sounds like, so should be fine.
Okay, and the site visit on the 18th?
That's putting a lot of weight on us.
Well, just put it in your calendar.
Good thing you showed up tonight.
Yeah.
I'm not sitting in this chair again.
And
Responsibility, not chair.
Everyone, except for one person, has completed the ethics stuff, thank you.
I'm that one person.
That's because you failed it.
I did fail it. I did not. Actually, so, did I already take it?
Oh, I don't know. I wasn't advised that
He never took it.
A member of my ZBA board, the only one I was told was that James hadn't taken it, and I was told one member of my finance committee hadn't taken it, but that's all I was
Did you ever take it? I've taken it, I just don't remember what.
It would have been recently. It's so fun. You should do it again, like, just because.
I'm doing it right now. Full of an hour.
If you can't remember it, you might as well do it.
Diana sent me an email.
Oh, okay. She just, she had sent it to you from, for Select Four probably, so she didn't send it to me.
So I'm being taken out as the only person, and really, there's two of us.
Exactly, sorry.
And the most, least ethical people here. A realtor, and a contractor.
I know.
What's surprising, the lawyers got through. I was a contractor before I was a realtor, so it's very strange.
Yeah.
I'm up there to wait for it.
Anything else we need to cover?
Is there anything we need to know about the ongoing 40B, the appeal?
Oh, I can give you an update as much as I have.
Yeah.
So we had a pre-trial conference on January 19th.
Okay.
At which point the hearing officer asked the town council and the developer's attorney to get together to do a joint statement of the issues. And at that pre-trial conference, it just talked through some stuff. And then MECT and a group of private citizens have asked to be recognized as interveners, which would mean they would support our side. And at that January 19th conference, she said that that ruling should be made within two to three weeks. I recently heard from Patrice Murphy at MECT, and she said, "No decision has been made yet." The developer apparently was contesting.
Ousing intervention.
Yeah, was opposing the intervention. So that's where it is.
Is there a date set for trial?
No. It can't be until this joint
It's going to go on forever.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, and it was going to be, so what happens in the process is they will come out and do a site visit on the day of the first public hearing meeting, and that first public hearing will be held in Town Hall.
What?
Yes, and then after that
Where in Town Hall, when a lot of people
Here.
What happens if 300 people
Well, I shouldn't say Town Hall, I should say a site selected by the, in the
Could be Memorial or
The obituary.
Yeah.
When you say the first public hearing
You should do it the Legion.
That's the opening of the trial. That's the public hearing.
Yeah.
It's so strange that they do it that way.
And
The Legion of
And then after that, then they hold all of the continued public hearings at a neutral site, usually at the state, but right now the state doesn't have a conference room because they're all under renovation, so.
Is that a joke?
No.
Were the T's involved in all this?
Yeah, right, MBTA, you can't get there, they closed the station.
So that's where we stand. So originally, when we were talking timelines with town council, we were expecting it to go in the, like, the middle of 2024. It seems to me like maybe we're going beyond that. So it's certainly not on a fast track, even though I think the paperwork says fast track.
Yeah, that's best for, can you imagine if you're on the slow track? And then were those summons, is all quashed?
So I was going to ask about that too.
Yes.
So is this, this stuff?
So she, she said that because the One Dexter Lane property owner was also on the case, that there was nothing we needed to do. And the town council is participating in the case passively. So there will be the attorneys for the One Dexter Lane property owners, who will be the lead people contesting the appeal, which is what normally happens, usually the property owners. And I said there was no special circumstances that would need the town to
No, but so did they, because if we were summoned to formally appear, were they officially quashed or dismissed?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good. I just want to make sure that it was
Town council handled that, yes.
Like, I don't want to get another notice saying failure of appearance.
She contacted their attorney.
She shot the law out of here.
But, yeah, right, exactly.
Because the notice was to be, appear before the attorney, and so she contacted the attorney.
I see.
"Don't worry about it," she said.
Until they fit you for a jumpsuit.
Exactly.
So any other questions? And that's the only appeal I'm aware of that's pending. Well, today.
Today.
Are there others skeletons in the closets somewhere?
I wouldn't be surprised.
Yes, this one today.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm not aware of any, but I didn't think the One Dexter Lane was
I heard it would be
Was, yeah, was going to be that contentious, so it's hard to know.
Beautiful old building.
It really is.
And they've done wonderful things to it.
I know.
Anything else? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Well done.
Awesome. Well done, meeting.